Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. Chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which hands are raised. The ring hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. Staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. President Abbas, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Can we please have approval of minutes? Motion. Let's move. Alder Haley, that's second. Thank you very much. Any question, comments, or minutes? I do not see any hand raised. Thank you very much. With that, I will move to the public comment. And at public comment, I saw Matty Reese register for the public comment. And John Brown, also they registered for Agenda Item Number Two, Agenda Item Number Three. So if Matt... Can we, Stefan, can we get Matty? I just want to make sure if she take an opportunity for early public comment.
Yes.
Do you want to talk on early public comment? Or do you want to wait until you want to talk on Randall Park Safety Plan and Destination Medicine? Or would you prefer to talk right now?
I would rather wait.
You would rather wait? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Perfect. I will get you when we will discuss, which is coming shortly, the Agenda Item Randall Park and Destination Medicine. So I appreciate that. Is John Brown is here from District 14? Neither support or oppose and wish to speak?
There is no John Brown here.
All right. So these are the two people registered to speak. With that, we will move forward to disclosures and recusal. Anybody wish to disclose or accuse, please raise your hand. I don't see any hand raised. So we will move forward to update item, which is Agenda Item Number Two, Legislative File Number 67568, which is an update on Randall Park Safety Plan. And before we get Jim O'Keefe update, we will go on public registrant. We will start with Pearl Foster, District Six, in opposition and wish to speak.
There is no one present by that name.
I can see Pearl in attendees.
Oh, okay. Pearl. Sorry. Yep.
I have a thick accent, so.
Pearl, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself. Pearl, try star six if you're on a phone.
Hi. Can you hear me now? Sorry, my Zoom like disappeared. Couldn't find it.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So the end of the safety plan in question reads, I believe, "Be it further resolved that the mayor and the council direct city staff, including fire, MPD, parks, streets, and parking enforcement to work with campers currently using the Randall Park encampment and outreach service providers to develop, agree, and implement a safety plan by and submit to the council by September 21, 2021. The focus is on the safety and well-being of the campers and users and can help bring an end to the use of the Randall Park as an encampment. And be it finally resolved that this emergency declaration shall expire on December 31, 2021, during which time the emergency conditions are likely to exist. The campers at Randall have not had any input into this plan, yet it directly impacts their life. They've also not seen or agreed to any of the conditions of the plan. As far as the on-house campers and their advocates and volunteers can tell, this safety plan has also not been made public. Further, January 1st, a January 1st eviction is a terrible idea and frankly inhumane. I saw what an eviction the snow and ice in February at McPike Park was like when people's belongings were frozen to the ground and could not physically be taken with them. People ended up at Randall in the foot of snow without their tents or supplies. Since the second eviction was put up in April, the on-house population has been asking that their voices be heard in any decisions that impact their life. Over six months later, and their voices are still being silenced. Many have been loud and clear that the Dairy Drive location is not something that they wanted, had an input in, and feel it's a big waste of money. On October 24th, News 3 quoted O'Keefe in saying, "We may need to make some difficult decisions about who we ask to go where. This location might not work for everybody. For the 30 people chosen to go to the sheltered campground moving could be as early as mid-November. This will leave roughly 30 to 40 people at Randall still in need of better shelter from the cold." So who will be the chosen? Who determines someone's privilege? Who is deserving of spending $2,400 on per month while the rest don't even have access to water? And why are they cherry picking out of Randall and not other camps around the city? And still, O'Keefe and the rest of the decision makers aren't talking to the people at Randall or listening to them as the emergency order was supposed to require? I'd like a resolution immediately not to force an eviction of the encampment at Randall Park this winter. Moving around the community only causes further trauma for an already vulnerable population in winter in Wisconsin. As Yuli Williams said in last night's Homeless Issues Committee, "The folks at Randall are a community, like a family, and you don't break up families during the holidays. The common council needs to help those at Randall survive the winter in whatever ways they feel safe, not make them move in the middle of winter to a more isolated place, such as the Highway 30 Bridge or into the woods. Community is what saves lives, and isolation kills. The people at Randall know this, and many are determined to stay." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pearl. Next is Matty Reese from Wonachie. Neither support nor oppose and wish to speak.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Well, tonight, I tuned in. Well, the person that went before me, she pretty much summed it up. But I have kind of a different concern. At Randall Park, we have those in the beginning. About six months ago, we all came down and we sat and we decided that yes, that we needed to divide those. Those who wanted to go here and those who wanted to go there, those who wanted to go into shelter, Dairy Drive. So we came to the conclusion that we knew that they wanted to be separated at a certain point for their growth. I just believe that all the money that we are putting into these Band-Aid projects are being misused. I believe that we haven't talked about it as a community. I'm so ashamed of our common council to push these things forward because we haven't made a decision as a community. They were given the tents to go out to Randall Park. It was cold then when they had to move into Randall Park. You put them there. Now that they've been there and that the media has caught attention, the community has caught attention, now it's an embarrassment. And now that our city is embarrassed, they want to fix their mistake. But at this point, you've developed a village that don't want to move. I want to move them. I wish that they were coming to the hotel with my program. I wish that they would go to Dairy Drive with that program or that program. But they are saying that they don't want to leave. Those who do want to leave, give them the opportunity to go with the service that they want to go with. Don't force them to have to go with a service because you take all the money and you give it to one service and you leave the other service empty not to provide the security, the needs, the barriers that they may need to push their people into a better situation. So you leave one dry. We have to separate them, but you separated them straight down the middle when you said, "We'll supply millions over here to Mach One. We'll supply millions over here to tiny homes." On one grant, I saw over $5 million given to two different services, but it was the same person. What are we doing here? We're so used to doing things the same way that sometimes I believe that you guys are not even reading the RFP because it says the most vulnerable population. And yet you give it to those who are already set up to provide for the clients that they have, but you leave the rest of the clients dry. This is an unfair process because we're doing the work. We're a service out here doing the work, helping our city. These are y'all. These are y'all residents.
Thank you. Your time is over. Thanks for your testimony. Alder Bennett, I saw your hand. It says perhaps you have a question?
Staff promote Alder for roll call to panelist.
She's already panelist. I mean, I think so you're talking about Alder Curry, perhaps?
Oh, perhaps.
Yeah. Stefan, can you send?
Yep. Yeah, I just said that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Our last registrant for Agenda Item Number Two is John Brown from District 14. Neither support nor oppose and wish to speak.
There is no one by that name present.
Okay. Well, in that case, any questions for the registrants? I do not see any hand raised. Matt, let go ahead.
My apologies, President Abbas. We had a last-minute registrant for item number two, a gentleman by the name of Bob Schaefer. I don't know if he's present currently.
All right. I can see Bob Schaefer. And I believe it's from District 17?
Yes. 17. And yes, I just wanted to... Sorry for late registering. But one of the questions that I think needs to be answered is, you know, we definitely want to take care of the people from our communities. I'm wondering whether or not people from other parts of the state or other states have also joined the Randall campout and whether or not that's a factor. I think that when the people are talking about those people having the right to be involved in the decision-making, I'm not quite sure if that fits in. I think that definitely they need to be taken care of. But I think that the city and the staff needs to look for the best way of accommodating that. This is not in any way to mean that they are not important. They are important. We just need to find the best space and the best solution. And they may not be the people to choose what that is.
Thank you, Bob. With that, questions for our registrant, Alder McKinney?
Thank you very much. I like for Matty Reese. Are you still on?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Matty, you ran out of time as you were giving your statement. And I want you to complete your thought. And I really want to ask you, when you said specifically about the allocation of dollars and the process and who's getting what in terms of who is actually supporting and communicating with the individuals out at Randall. So that's a lot inside of that. And just share with us, I mean, hands on, boots on the ground, what's happening over at Randall?
Matty, you may have to unmute yourself again.
Okay. Mrs. McKinney, what's happening over at Randall is that we're having Jim O'Keefe, we're having Sarah Lim, we're having Callis for Change, and we're having Mach One and myself connecting the dots, who has followed Randall Park for... We were at McPike Park and they were moved to Randall Park. So I've been since McPike Park. Those organizations have not been at McPike Park, only towards the end when it was time to leave. Over at Randall Park, they are saying that we don't want to go to Dairy Drive. I even have a shelter program over at the Magnuson Hotel where we have the vulnerable population. And some are even saying, "Matty, we love you to death." We're asking the city and the county. Jim O'Keefe came down, right in front of him, the homeless folks is saying, "These folks that you're giving our money to, we're not getting it. Can you give Connecting the Dots $500,000 so that we can get taken care of? Because we believe that that is who our representative is." Randall Park is full of those who are asking. They're saying, "This is what we want from you guys. This is what we're asking from you guys." And yet Jim O'Keefe and Sarah Lim, they come out and they sit Indian-style and they ask, "Well, what can we do to help?" But yet the dollars are not flowing that way. The dollars are flowing towards Caucasian nonprofits as usual. But yet we're boots on the ground. We're coming out every day. We're feeding. We're asking. We're bringing tissue. We're sending food off of our own credit cards, of our own funds, when the city of Madison has money set to the size, specific for these folks at this park. They're asking me, "Matty, will you come down and will you protest with us? Because no one can hear our voices unless we have someone with us there as our representative." And it looks like they may listen to you. Well, Matty, should we or should we not be suing the city? Because our money is being allocated to organizations that don't even come out and assist us or bring us anything. They bring us a Band-Aid and they bring us some wood, and this is all we have. Matty, we don't want to go into the tiny homes because if that's the case, we can stay out here inside of our tents. But yet when you come up against Jim O'Keefe and Sarah Lim in the HSC board, they come in front of the city council and they say that this is what these folks want, and it's not. These folks are on this phone call, the ones that are able in their right frame of mind where they can get on and fight for themselves. They come to these board meetings and they fight for themselves, these council meetings, and they fight for themselves, but their voices are not being heard. So what's going down at Randall Park is that folks have come down to Randall Park and took our credit that we have done for that park, and they left us out and gave millions of dollars to Mach One and to the tiny homes. If you look at the RFPs, you'll see it. The COC gave out money where $81,000 was the budget. They gave out $3 million. Can y'all please go get the rest of our money? Because there's organizations that need that money. How do you have a budget of $81,000 and you get $3 million? Can somebody tell me what's going on here? So this is what Randall Park is talking about because they not sleep. Just because they on the ground don't mean they sleep. You got some smart folks out there who know the law. You got folks out there who know that this money came in their name and they haven't received the services. So I want to take myself out of the equation tonight. I want to take Connecting the Dots, the 501(c)(3) that I represent, out of the equation, and I want to just be a citizen today. And that's what I ask that each one of you on this line do. Remove yourself. Just, I know you got duties tonight, but just take it off the table for a second and just be a citizen and listen to the other citizens as they speak. And put yourself back into your position when you're ready to make a decision. That's it, Ms. Barb.
Alder Carter, question?
Yeah, thank you. I have a question for Matty. Matty, can you tell? Give me a summary of what happened at the protest? The most recent one, I just think it was a few weeks ago or a couple of weeks ago?
Yes. So the night before the protest, one of the folks down at Randall Park and said, "Matty, could you come down and help us protest?" I said, "Sure." So I came down, I brought food, and we made... I gave them supplies to make signs. And Mach One had came down, Friends of State Street had came down and assisted us with the protest. We cut off one side of the street in the beginning. And Friends of State Street stood in the middle. Mach One stood in the beginning, and I stood in the front. And then we had a couple of folks from the park who lived there that we were protesting. There were signs like, "Jim O'Keefe, where are you?" There were signs like, "What would God do?" There were signs like, "We are human", just all different signs to represent how they felt inside. Jim O'Keefe, after the protest, we protested. We cut off both sides of the streets. The police came out. They assisted. The direction allowed us to do what we do. I thought that, "Okay, guys, are you ready? I think we made our point. You know, are you ready to go?" They said, "Yes." We packed up and we left. About an hour later, Mr. Jim O'Keefe, he came down to the park. They called me and said, "Well, Matty, Jim is here." So I came back to the park and they were having a discussion with Jim. And they were asking Jim, like, you know, "What are we doing here? Why do we have to go to Dairy Drive? What is the assistance? Who would be picked? What will we have at that location to get us back on East Washington so that we can kind of do our business? Because everything happens on East Washington." And they were just, you know, saying rampant. They were angry. They were angry. They were saying all different type of stuff. So as we were speaking, one of the guys who stay at the park, he spoke about how Brenda Coco had mentioned in the park to the homeless folks that the city knew that this was going to be a failure project and how the city is going to blame her when someone ODs and that she knows that this project isn't going to work and she's just ready to take the hit. So she says this in front of the homeless folks. Discourage them. Give them no hope. Basically tell them, basically, "Don't come. It's a failure." I don't believe in it. But yet, I had to tell the folks out at the park that Mrs. Brenda Coco, I mean, Ms. Brenda, is the one from Mach One who is going to be running Dairy Drive. No one knew her as we were standing out there. So I introduced her and I said that I hope that since she got the RFP, because the county sent the RFP to me on a Friday and expected me to get the RFP in on a Monday. Friday, Monday. I was distraught. I knew that my grant writer didn't have enough time to get the RFP in, so that counted me out the game. Her and I were the only ones who were going for the project for Dairy Drive. So that alleviated me out of the project right there. So at the protest, Mr. O'Keefe came down. We explained to Mr. O'Keefe that Brenda has made these allegations about Dairy Drive. And he was surprised. He was a little, you know, upset. And he made the comment that if Brenda was... If Brenda felt that way, that maybe she shouldn't not be the one to lead the project. So, you know, these are the things that I'm up against. And I want to put myself in the equation because I am one of the representatives for those folks down at Randall Park or homeless folks in my community because I have been homeless. So I am a representative. So I want to put myself back to say, if you have a project that you don't even believe in, how are you going to put success, love, and care inside of it if you think that it's a failure already? See, I don't think the Dairy Drive is a failure. I want them from out of the park. And those who want to live in that type of condition, I think that we can make it work if you have love and compassion and hope for the people. So I'm not against Dairy Drive. I think that it could be something that could work for those who want to live in those type of conditions. So when folks say that I'm dashing Dairy Drive, that is untrue. I am with the project. I believe that I can make the project be a success. That is what is going down, and that is what went down at the protest.
Thank you for that clarification. I just have one more question for you. Obviously, we have moved people to Randall Park and others have come and joined them and even more others as the months and days go by. At this point, what percentage would you say of the individuals at the park want to relocate?
I haven't heard one. Everybody said that they're going to stand their ground thus far that I communicate with and I communicate with everybody out at the park. No one wants to go to Dairy Drive. And they said they'll stand their ground. Some is willing to go to jail if they have to. At least they'll get three meals and a cot. That's how they feel. They don't want to be forced into a position that they didn't even get to speak about. So I mean, you know, to discuss with you guys to say, "Who wants to go here?" And then you can pick... They're so worried about how you're going to pick the 30 people. And I've been asking from day one, "How are you going to pick who you're going to get over there? How are you going to pick? And who do you...? How are you going to choose who's worthy and who isn't?"
Let me just ask you this question. Was there any community meetings at Randall Park to talk about Dairy Drive or what the individuals who reside there want to do?
So this is what they do, Ms. Carter. They have James and they have two other guys that always come to the meetings regardless to what. No one else really comes into those spaces, but James and the other two people who really stand their ground, and they're not in the park anymore. So I don't know. I heard that James came back to the park yesterday. But those three who stood their ground on May 9th, when I cleared the park out and there was only three folks left, those were the three who stayed in the park all the time, but they're not even in the park anymore. So they're the ones that usually attend those meetings, and they still do come. But the rest of the park, they don't.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Alder Carter and Matty. Any other questions? Stefan, I can see there is a hand raised, Galaxy8NE, and I know John Brown registered. So I wondered if that's the person.
Okay. I can unmute them and we can find out here.
Appreciate that.
Galaxy, you are unmuted.
Yes, I am, John Brown.
Perfect. So John, for future reference, please try to register it under your own name, especially for common council meeting because there's so many parts here. That's your name. Please go ahead. You have three.
Yes. Listen to all has been said. Yesterday, I was on a meeting with the HSC and we had a meeting about the budget. And I addressed that I went over the budget and many service asked for $91,000 for their budget and got $3 million plus. Another service asked for $220,000. He got $3 million plus. Another service asked for $800,000 and got $3 million plus. So talking to this board is different than the other board because I worked with the other board. I used to be the vice president of the HSC in February. So I told them that it's defrauding the government because I can't fight on both sides. I work with Sherri Carter, Barbara McKinley. I work with everyone in the whole city. And this situation got to a point with me towards, "I would like to put a proposal in and I'd like to fund the peoples that is no longer people. I'd like to fund everyone in the park as normal citizens trying to get back on their feet. I'd like to take all the black folks, and y'all can have all the white ones. There's many white ones in there. And I'd like to take all my brothers and sisters and build something to ground up." That's my conversation on this meeting right now because we don't ran out of solutions as citizens and we targeting each other as the market of slavery to me. And I don't even know how to understand what I'm saying right now, but I'd like to be funded due to what I understand about the blackout tours. We are disadvantaged. We are disadvantaged, the disempowered. And I feel we should have more than that in this country. There's a setback unless citizens, slaves, other citizens, or we pretend that we building something, which we not. We building something that none of us want. Who want to go in the park with no lights or water? And they say, "This is what they want." No way I would ask for that. I'm homeless now. I've been homeless five years. Now I work with the system. They don't even look at me to say, "John, you homeless. We're going to get you a place first." So that's all I want to say right there because I got a lot of work to do right now.
Thank you very much, John. Any question for the attendees? I do not see any hand raised. Jim, please go ahead with the update.
Good evening, President Abbas and members of the committee.
I am here, um, I believe to pro, to provide an update on the Rendell Park Safety Plan, though the discussion has, has really moved quite away from that. So I'm going to continue along that path. Um, I would imagine that folks may have questions about this or other topics afterwards. And I'm happy to um, do my best to try to answer them. So let me begin, um, President Abbas, by offering an apology for um, our failure to comply with the uh, the council request to um, present formally this safety plan. Um, I, I can assure you that uh, we didn't ignore that request. We were overtaken by events. It's a, a rare occurrence that we don't follow through um, as requested by the council. And I want to um, just say at the outset that um, we tried very hard to meet uh, that request and, and fell short. As conditions at Rendell Park worsened during the course of the summer and attention turned to identifying and preparing alternative venues to the park, it was very much apparent to staff and we heard directly from campers and service providers that there were steps that could and should be taken in the interim to address some of the issues and improve the safety of people using the park. That was really the genesis of, of the so-called safety plan. We had discussed many of these issues during the preceding weeks and months. We had talked to outreach staff and yes, we had spoken with campers at Rendell Park ourselves. And I might add on uh, more than one occasion in the presence of some of those who have, who have addressed you tonight. So much of the content of the safety plan came from those discussions. We had contemplated taking a completed plan to the park as, as part of the instruction from the council. We ran into a COVID outbreak that affected uh, one of the outreach teams that we had worked uh, most closely with. And it had um, affected a, a good number, about a dozen campers at Rendell Park. And so we put our plans to, to, to go back to the park and discuss this plan um, with them on hold um, in the interest of safety of, of, of my staff. We meet weekly city staff from multiple agencies to discuss issues pertaining to Rendell Park. Uh, we have for many months and continue to do so. And the elements of this plan um, have been and continue to be the focus of those meetings. So with that as an introduction, um, let me, let me walk you through the, the elements of um, the, the so-called safety plan that we had developed. Um, there are really six components to it. Um, and I'll go through each of them and I'll, I'll try to be brief. The, the first was um, focused on improving sanitary conditions at the park. Um, this included um, items that addressed um, the, the rest, the situation with restrooms. Um, improvements to uh, a refuse collection plan uh, for the active encampment, establishing protocols to clean up abandoned sites with sufficient notice and so on. The second element of this plan was to improve park lighting. Um, at about the time that, that this discussion under, was underway, um, there were improvements made to the lighting in the main parking lot. That was a, a primary um, source of concern. And in addition to that, uh, we evaluated and, and then later installed additional lighting at the park, similar to what was installed at Starkweather Creek um, in, in more of the open areas and getting away from um, from the, the parking lot. The next element uh, focused on reducing drug trafficking and related criminal activity um, in the park and especially uh, the concentration of that activity in that parking lot adjacent to the park. So this involved increasing Madison Police presence and enforcement against drug trafficking um, and other criminal activities, again, especially in the main parking lot. The fourth element was um, an attempt to reduce vehicular traffic in the park and along the bike path and, and around the bike path. Um, we took steps uh, to install signage and communicate the legal requirements um, about not driving through the park, um, established an educational timeframe and approach, working with campers um, to try to uh, discourage the use of uh, of vehicles in the park. Um, and, and then uh, discussed uh, processes to take enforcement action um, against violators when, when that occurred. The fifth element of the plan was to better define the geographic dimensions of the encampment at Rendell Park. Um, as you know, during the course of the summer, um, it, it grew not only in terms of the numbers of campers, but in um, the footprint um, of, of that encampment in the park. Uh, we sought to establish areas within the park where encampment would be allowed and, and, and uh, work to encourage people who are outside of those areas um, to, to, to move within them. Uh, we considered establishing an enforcement, and enforcing an occupancy limit, uh, an idea that was um, ultimately discarded. Um, work to communicate to those outside of the allowed areas. Um, but a, a timeframe to try to um, encourage, seek their compliance. Um, and then lastly, uh, there was uh, some focus on uh, campfires, the use of campfires, um, and the need to protect um, trees in the park and on other natural areas. Um, so work to communicate with, with campers, the hazards and the environmental impact on specific actions. There was the need to remove um, a, a couple of, of trees that had been damaged um, for the safety of, of campers. Um, we uh, more recently um, delivered burn barrels in the hope of, of trying to contain fires um, and, and use them appropriately. Um, an act that I might add was, was well received by campers. So, so those were the elements um, of the safety plan. Um, it, it is very much a work in progress and there, there are any number of these items that we continue to, to work to try to improve situations. Um, but, but that's the safety plan and um, I'll stop there. Again, I'll be um, more than happy to try to respond to questions that you have about this or about other topics that, that you've heard about tonight.
Thank you, uh, Jim. Uh, I appreciate the step-by-step uh, process and safety plan. Alder Figuraco, questions?
Yes, thank you, President Abbas. And I'm sorry for the background noise. I'm driving. I just want to address a couple of questions to Mr. O'Keefe. Um, Jim, can you um, please add, address um, for the rest of us? What did they, um, any discussions that you may have had with connected, connected dots to, with their interest to run the encampment at Dairy Drive?
I'd be happy to, um, Alder. So I, I, I don't think I need to describe for um, for members of the, of the committee, the, the haste within which we um, began to move to uh, prepare the Dairy Drive location. Um, once it was identified and once uh, approval was gained from the council to proceed with, with that um, location. Uh, we, we understood from very early on that, that a key ingredient in making that campground successful would be having an operator that, uh, that could help manage and provide services at the site. We um, developed and we released a request for proposals for organizations um, that might be interested in, in fulfilling those responsibilities that, that were laid out in the request for proposals. Um, we had discussed this in the weeks leading up to the release of that, that RFP, what, what that content would be. Um, admittedly, we did not allow a lot of time, because we didn't have a lot of time um, to entertain proposals. So um, it was released on a Tuesday morning and, and responses were due uh, by end of day the following Monday. Um, so, so there wasn't a lot of time and, and, and I acknowledge that um, Maddie Reese, um, and, and perhaps others were frustrated by that. And I would feel worse about that frankly, if not for the conversation that I had with Maddie Reese the week before we released uh, the, the RFP. When we discussed what we were about to do and what we were looking for and she told me that her, her organization was not in a position to, to provide the, the kinds of services that we were looking for. Um, I made it clear to her that we were, we were seeking a single organization that we anticipated that that organization might need to collaborate with others and we hope that would be the case. Uh, but we would be looking for a lead agency. To which she responded that neither was she prepared to play the, the, the role of that lead agency, but she was interested in being part of the solution. Um, and, and so we left open the possibility of her collaborating with other organizations that um, that might have responded to the RFP. It was not for, um, for the city, for the Community Development Division to force those collaborations. Um, and at, at, at the end, um, connecting the dots, neither connecting the dots nor Maddie Reese responded to that RFP process. And so obviously they weren't considered um, as, as we made that selection.
Thank you, Jim. And then with regards to this idea that keeps on coming up every other meeting, that the city staff has not, has not made an effort to, to meet with the campers. Have you, can you give us an idea on how, how often have you been at the park, around the park and getting input from campers or participating on the, on the Thursday circle meeting? Can you please um, clarify a little bit for us on that regard?
So I don't, and I don't keep track of the number of times that, that, that I personally have been to Rendell Park. But, um, but I have been to Rendell Park a number of times, most recently, um, directly um, following the event that, that Alder Carter had asked about. When I learned that, that there was um, some kind of a demonstration at Rendell Park, um, I made a point of, of going there. I spent five hours that Saturday afternoon at the park. But it's not the only time that I've been there. Um, I, I took part in one of the Thursday evening um, community meetings, they, they call them. It was disrupted um, that evening and um, and, and we believed, I was there along with, with a couple of, of my colleagues. Um, we believed that, that we inadvertently, um, perhaps were the cause of that disruption, that, that rather than have a community conversation like we had hoped might happen and that we might be able to participate in, that we became the focus of that meeting. Um, and, and found it not to be particularly productive. So, so we went back on several occasions, um, three, four, or five, six different occasions that come to mind um, immediately to me, um, in, in which we tried to have conversations directly with individual campers or smaller groups of, of campers, rather than do a, a, a larger gathering. Um, that, that didn't turn out so well, that, that approach didn't turn out so well um, in the past. I know that um, that my colleague Sarah Lim is a regular um, presence at Rendell Park. Um, we are in, in very regular contact with um, a number of outreach organizations that, that are there um, on a regular basis. So, so I, I, I do think that we um, have made a, uh, an effort, a legitimate effort to um, solicit input and stay in contact with, with folks that have been using Rendell Park.
And also, I mean, can you please confirm that there has been occasions when you had show up there with other agencies to collect that input? Such as Parks and MPD? It has been a collaborative, collaborative effort with multiple agencies to go to the park and seek input. Is that a, a true statement or is that a false statement?
It, it, it's absolutely a true statement, Alder. Right, so, so, so I, I think the point you're making is that it has not just been CDD staff. It's not just been CDD staff in, in the company of outreach staff. But it, it has included um, other city agencies, um, most notably, um, our colleagues in the Parks Division. Um, and on several occasions, um, colleagues in, in the Madison Police Department.
Yeah, I mean, the point, absolutely, that is correct. The point I'm trying to make is that this idea that input hasn't been collected, it's, it's absolutely inaccurate. I myself have been present in some of those uh, walkthroughs. So I can, I, I, I know it's not what is being said is absolutely inaccurate. So I appreciate your input and um, um, President Abbas. I do have comments, but I guess I will reserve them for that moment. Thank you. Thank you, O'Keefe.
Thank you, Alder Figuraco. Uh, Jim, uh, one quick question. Uh, could you please speak a little bit more about uh, education and outreach? You mentioned about the bicycle path and education outreach. I have seen myself black SUV parked on a grass and also I saw a person driving within, with the boundary of encampment was concerning. So how much outreach has been done regularly? What is outreach plan and education plan to make sure residents over there are safe?
So I, I, I think that the issue of, of um, the risks associated with vehicle traffic in the park and, and on the bike path is one of the, um, i- i- is one of the earlier um, concerns that had been raised. I, I, I believe at that first Thursday meeting, um, that issue came up about the, the safety risk to campers. Um, and, a- and so we responded to that almost immediately. Um, first through um, impressing upon uh, the different outreach groups that are, that are working at the park. Um, our desire to convey that message to campers. Um, I know that, uh, that park rangers staff have also um, taken it upon themselves to, um, to, to make that point. Um, we have um, ultimately um, prepared signage along the path um, and in the entrances to the park. Um, informing people that it was um, against city ordinances to drive through the park. Um, we've heard recently in, in one of our recent meetings, uh, report out from um, Captain uh, Donahue about, about um, her officers focus on, um, on that issue and um, talking to campers about, um, about not driving through the park. So there've been a number of different efforts over a, really a fairly extended period of time, um, Alder Boss.
Thank you. I have a couple of more questions, but looking at the time, uh, I would like to get Destination Madison at five forty to give you and com executive committee another twenty minutes to discuss and question answer. So they have lost twenty minutes to give their presentation. So with that, uh, I will take my question offline, Alder McKinney. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, uh, President Abbas. My couple of questions are, um, uh, around the, um, the, the RFP. And um, Jim, and also Maddie, but Jim, you said that the RFP uh, was released on a Wednesday and had to be returned back. Um, and so you tell me the days.
Alder, it was released on, on a Tuesday morning.
On a Tuesday, okay. Released on a Tuesday morning and it had to be completed and back into the response had to be completed by when?
The following Monday.
The following Monday.
Admittedly, much shorter than we typically um, offer for these kinds of processes. But again, uh, we, we were working in a, in a very uh, compressed period of time and
And how many, uh, and how many responses did you get to, uh, the RFP?
We received a single response.
You received a single response. What was the dollar amount for um, the totality of the uh, RFP?
So we did not, we did not convey of, of a, a dollar figure. we did not convey a, a, a dollar figure. This was unlike the requests for proposals that are more typical where we have a certain sum of, of funding that we make available. In this case, the RFP was, was seeking an organization or organizations that, that were interested in and prepared to provide a, a range of services that were spelled out in the RFP that mostly focused around providing property management services at the Dairy Drive campground location and providing onsite staff support. And, and so we, we allowed respondents to the RFP to describe their plans and, and including the, the costs to execute those plans.
And so I have two more questions and, and I, and I'll have two more questions and then I'll stop because I know our time is limited. The fact that, so, so how much, even if the amount was not included in the RFP, how much does this, this contract entail? What was the, what was the total amount that will be distributed related to bringing Dairy Drive up to standards or up to occupancy?
So Alder, I think you're asking two separate questions within one question. So there is, and there is a capital expense that is associated with preparing the site.
So, so let me break it down. You're absolutely correct. Talking about the capital. I'm really more or less talking about the service that this RFP addresses. Thank you for making that correction for me.
We anticipate that, that the service costs, the onsite service costs, including property management that we're looking for will cost approximately $75,000 per month. So it's, I think this will fall by the time that we're finished over a 12-month period. Somewhere in that $750,000 to nearly a million dollars. And I think that, I, I think that where we land on that continuum is going to hinge in large part on how things go. I, I think, I think Mach One wants to start out making sure that they're, that they're prepared, that they're adequately staffed. And as, as we progress, I, I think they anticipate that the need for some of those staff resources might abate some. And, and we and they may be able to, to scale that back a little bit, but, but it'll depend, I, I think in large part on the experience.
And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna roll my next question into, to, to one. And so it's roughly $75,000 per month, the operational cost for this. And the, the eight, the organization that, that was selected, the number of staff per, the, the details for the number of staff people to make this work was not determined. That's still questionable. Is that correct?
The Mach One proposal, Alder McKinney, contained a detailed staffing plan that described the, the staff positions, the number of positions and the nature of those positions that, that they would propose to employ to provide the services that we were asking for during, during the course of that, during the course of the operation of the, of the campground.
Okay. And so my closing, and I'm not finished, but in my closing, of the 30 people that are going to be selected for this site and the fact that the city, I want to say pushed out the door because I know you said that there was a sense of urgency that, that $75,000 a month estimate for 30 individuals that'll, that'll have to be selected or volunteer however they show up in Dairy Drive. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm very concerned about that. It, it gives me angst, now, number one, about the shortness of the time. Number two, that there was only one agency that applied for that. It seems to me that that in itself would have given some angst in terms of, of looking for more collaboration. And, and I heard you said is that it was not the city's responsibility to, to quote, force collaborations, but I think that it is some of the cities and that's where my problem is, is that we have agencies fighting each other because the city doesn't take that extra step in, in encouraging collaborations. And so I don't have any more questions, but I'm really uncomfortable with this whole setup. Thank you.
Well, Alder, everything about this has given me angst, quite frankly. This is, this has come together quite, quite quickly. We've got a situation at Rindell Park that is untenable and will only get worse as the weather worsens. But when I say that it, it's not our place to force collaboration, what I mean by that, not, not that it isn't, it isn't our goal and not that we haven't encouraged collaboration. And indeed, the Mach One proposal reflects a, a good deal of collaboration. What I meant is that I cannot force and, and would not propose to, to suggest that Mach One collaborate with, with connecting the dots or any other specific organization. That's not to say that, that they won't be collaborating because they will. And lastly, Alder, we're not going to select campers at Rindell Park to go to Dairy Drive. They're going to select Dairy Drive as the place that they choose to go. And I want to make that as clear as I can possibly make it.
Thank you, Jim. Alder Carter, we have 10 more minutes. Please go ahead. You will mutate, Alder Carter.
Jim, I, I believe the selection was Mach One and then they are collaborating with KABA. I think that's how you pronounce it. Am I, is that correct?
They'll be collaborating formally with, with KABA. I'm aware that, that they're also in conversations about collaborations involving a whole host of other organizations.
Right. But what we voted on was those, those two collaborations and then they can continue to collaborate with a number of other people on their own.
We, we selected Alder and, and just, just to be clear and transparent, that was a decision that was not brought to the council. But, but we selected a lead agency to be responsible for providing and/or coordinating the provision of those services at the, at the campground.
You, you are correct. I was reading the press release. I'm sorry. So it was Mach One Health and KABA that was in your press release of October 26th, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My question to you is the situation at Rindell Park. And I believe that the bottom line is that all of us on the common council has contributed to the situation at Rindell Park. I don't want any one agency to fingers pointed at because we have all contributed from the time when there was three people to the time that there was 66 people. We have all contributed. So I, I just want to make sure that on the record that we are all contributors to that situation. Jim, my question to you is very quickly. At what time will date, anticipated date, will the fabricated homes be completed at Dairyland? I mean Dairy Drive.
Alder, they, they arrived on Sunday. They are all but completely assembled as of today. City engineering staff will now go about installing the electrical connections to them. So that, that site, we believe we're, we're on track to make it available for the first group of users to begin using it on November the 15th, the week of November the 15th. And we anticipate the, the moves to the Dairy Drive site to take place over the, the, the two or three weeks following that November 15th date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Alder Carter. Aldo Figueroa Cole, question, comments? We have five more minutes. If you have any questions, comments, please go ahead.
Thank you, President Abbas. I think, I mean, there is plenty on my mind. I'm sure we'll get this conversation canceled. So I'll, I'll reserve my time for that. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Any comments, questions for Jim O'Keefe? I do not see any hand raised. Jim, thank you very much for coming and giving a presentation on, or update on various steps. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Alder.
Yep. With that, we will move next to agenda item number three. Just give me one second. Necessity file number 67810, which is a presentation regarding Destination Madison. And before we go on presentation, we have two people registered to speak, Maddie Reese, Wonaki, followed by John Brown, District 14. Neither sub or not oppose and wish to speak.
Looks like Maddie is no longer with us, but John is here.
John?
Yes, hello. So what's agenda is this?
This is you also registered under a presentation of Destination Madison. Would, would you wish to speak on that?
Yes, what, what do that consist of?
Pardon me?
What do the, what do that consist of? The name of it?
Destination Madison. This is a presentation on Destination Madison, agenda item number three, and you registered.
Yes, what do it do? I'm saying, what purpose are it? What do it do? Do it see somebody? What is the name of it?
The organization name is Destination Madison. I cannot talk about their purpose. If you wish to stay here, you can listen them. And you, if you want to speak, you go ahead. Speak to it.
I will after.
All right. With that, we will move forward to Destination Madison.
Good afternoon and thank you, President Abbas and committee members for inviting us in to speak today. President Abbas, to confirm, how much time do we have? I want to make sure we stay within the time limit that you've given us because we have a presentation we're going to walk through.
We have a hard stop at 6:00 PM. So you have a 24-minute, which also include question and answer.
Got it. Thank you. And Stefan, can you give Rob sharing rights so we can pull up our presentation?
He should have the ability to do that.
Perfect. Thank you all. And again, thank you for inviting us in to speak tonight. I, I have met some of you individually and I've not met all of you yet, but I look forward to doing that. I joined Destination Madison in February of this year. So I've been here just over eight months. Joining me tonight is Rob Gard. He's our Director of PR and Communications. So we're going to run through what the pandemic impact has been to tourism in the Madison area. And then we will walk through the recovery plan that we are in the present, presently implementing. And then we're just going to give you a little bit of insight into what our plans are as we move into 2022. So the pandemic impact on our community, Rob, next slide. In 2019, visitor spending in Madison was $1.4 billion. That dropped 43% in 2020 to $783 million. I think what's really important is that tourism supported 22,600 jobs in, in Madison in 2019. And unfortunately that dropped 30% in 2020 by to 15,811. Next slide. This is a look into each of our industry segments and how they declined. So you can see here like restaurants, food and beverage declined 37%. Lodging took the deepest dive at 66% and so forth. I think what's important here is that when you look at food and beverage and retail and recreation, a lot of these are small businesses. These are our neighbors that have, you know, opened, opened a business. And so we are supporting them to build back what they lost during the pandemic. In our homes, in each of our homes, as you can see here in 2019, each resident received about $780 in equivalent public services, thanks to what the tourists were spending in our city and the taxes they were paying. In 2020, that dropped to $507 per household. And this is just an eye chart for you to see. You know, we were really on a nice path in 2018 and 19, growing tourism impact in our community and that took a deep drop in 2020. We're going to talk about the, the contribution the city has made into tourism and how we are using that money to not only impact our community and all of our residents, but also how we're going to get back to those healthy numbers as we recover from the pandemic. Destination Madison, specifically, we had 93 events canceled that we had booked in 2020. And in 2021, we had 39 events canceled. And what that means were there were over 137,000 room nights that went unfulfilled. 208,000 attendees that did not make it here. And that direct spending that we lost was right around $71 million. Our budget was impacted by about 50%. We did apply for some grants and federal loans which lifted our, the impact to, the cut to about 43%. So when I got here, we really talked about creating a recovery plan. What were we going to do when we reopen? And how are we going to get that visitor back so we can regain that visitor spending in our community? And we met with each of our via Zoom, because this is when we weren't meeting in person yet. But we met with hotels and restaurants and venues and performing arts. And we said, hey, how are you doing, first of all? And two, what's your recovery plan? Because we wanted to make sure we got their input as we created our recovery plan. What we learned was staffing is an issue. Staffing is a huge issue and continues to be. Downtown is critical to the success of the region. So we need to get downtown back and healthy again. Our planners, whether it was on the convention side or the sports side, they were rebooking away from Madison into communities that had fewer restrictions than we had. And they are struggling getting equipment. We know we have a supply chain issue right now. So what does that recovery plan looks like? I'm going to turn it over to Rob to cover this next slide.
Thank you, Ellie. So one of the areas that impacted the most, of course, were those meetings and events that Ellie showed, the cancellations that we had. What was less affected was leisure travel. And that is something that we targeted pretty quickly in our recovery plan. We focused from a PR perspective on bringing in travel writers, people who had built-in audiences who were ready to safely travel to destinations they found interesting such as Madison. We had a goal of bringing in 15 over the course of the year-long recovery plan. Fortunately, when things opened up, travel writers were ready to travel and thus far we've brought in 24. And they're, these are top-tier travel writers and a very diverse group of travel writers. We've brought, we brought in the founder of the Black Travel Alliance. We have brought in some LGBTQ travel writers, road trip travel writers, family travel writers, really the whole breadth to show what Madison is, is about and how safe and accessible our community is for people. We have put a stretch goal out there because we already hit that 15 and hope to have 35 writers by the end of this. Similarly, on a marketing perspective, we have focused our social media and website efforts on the leisure traveler for now. Those goals are a little low. We had some staffing issues, but now we're fully staffed and anticipate picking up. um issues, but now we're fully staffed and anticipate picking up uh those uh marketing efforts. Uh national trends, Americans want to travel. That's been a a standard throughout the pandemic. Kind of how comfortable they are with traveling has uh evolved. But right now, the most travelers are in a state where they accept that COVID is here to stay in some form. Um so they are interested in traveling to places that are safe. Madison has a huge advantage with our vaccination level. Um and they have money to spend, particularly in that uh road trip area. They're looking to uh stay relatively close to home, but go to affordable places that have open spaces. Um our recovery campaign from that marketing perspective really is focusing on that leisure traveler. We want to position Madison as a perfect destination for Midwest road trippers. And we have expanded our target market beyond the traditional Minneapolis and Chicago uh because of that renewed interest in road tripping uh for the net for for the foreseeable future, for at least through the uh middle of twenty twenty two. So we're looking at um we've expanded to India, Indiana, Ohio, Missouri, uh Iowa, and looking to bring those people in to get those revenues back up for our hospitality industry. One of the other things that we launched, uh we planned this pre-pandemic, uh put a hold on it, and then ended up launching it in the pandemic, was a local ambassador program, taking diverse locals who have a perspective and a story of Madison that is authentic, that's true to our community and partner with them to share their stories of Madison. Uh we find that a lot of travelers, particularly that uh millennial traveler, that Gen Z, they want that authentic voice, that authentic representative of the destination we're going to. So we're having some great success with that local ambassador program. So that's the heavy focus on leisure, but we haven't lost sight on what is really the folk, the the vital part of our hospitality industry in Madison. That's meetings and convent, meetings and uh events and conventions. And Ellie's going to talk a little bit about our sales efforts.
So on the sales side, um as Rob mentioned, these are group, this is group travels. So they're coming in for a convention or a sporting event. You know, you can see here that we want to generate a hundred leads. Um these are leads that we're hoping to turn into booked business. We're at eighty two presently. Uh when we set this room night goal, I would tell you that meeting planners weren't returning our calls because they were still rebooking their business. They weren't sure what kind of budgets they were going to have, so we set our goal at fifty four thousand room nights. We're at just over fifty two thousand. If you see this presentation in the next couple of weeks, anywhere that we do it, you'll see a stretch goal on room nights because we are going to be increasing that. And then our planner touch points, um you know, this is key to success, is building those relationships. Our goal is just over two thousand, and we're just over eighteen hundred as far as the goal is concerned. I'm going to give you some eye charts moving forward here. So hotel occupancy is one of the ways that we track um what we're doing in our community. On this chart, the the light pinkish color is our occupancy for two thousand nineteen. The red color is twenty, and then the blue dotted line is where we are in twenty one. What occupancy means is day in and day out, how many rooms are booked? Hotel rooms are booked in Madison. And what does that occupancy look like? So we're doing pretty well moving upward. We had a little bit of a slug in August, thanks to the um Delta uh outbreak, uh but we see that growing back again. The next slide. Another way that we track this is called A D R, which is average daily rate. On average, what is our hotel rooms charging for a room? We've got a nice upward trend on this one, which we're happy to see. And then the next slide. Just a little bit of historical trends. I I always say, well, what did we do in two thousand nineteen, right? Two thousand twenty is not much of a comparison to things. And where are we going? So in two thousand nineteen, our average occupancy throughout the whole entire year was sixty one point five. Our forecast for twenty twenty is twenty twenty one is forty seven point three, twenty twenty two is fifty eight point nine. I'm really happy to see what twenty twenty two forecast is because all throughout the pandemic, all the national research was saying you are not getting back to two thousand nineteen numbers until twenty twenty five. So we're pretty close, as you can see, for twenty twenty two, if we stay on this trend. So I'm hoping we can get those numbers back to twenty nineteen sooner rather than later. Next slide. Um and then some convention and sports sales activity. From January of October, we have booked forty three groups. Nineteen of those were for this year. That was one of my goals coming in. Who can we book in the year for the year? Let's start getting some of this economic impact back. Those groups and the the rest of them are booked out to twenty twenty eight. That represents over a hundred and twenty nine thousand attendees, fifty nine thousand room nights, and a direct spending total approximately of over thirty million dollars. And we have quite a few on the books to book. So this is our pending business to close. These are groups that we feel really confident are going to book in. Everything with an asterisk is specifically from Manona Terrace. But as you can see, these groups go all the way out to twenty six, and it'll be twenty six thousand room nights when we close this business. Next slide. Rob, back to you.
Um as Ellie mentioned before, those conversations with stakeholders, both in the city of Madison and throughout Dane County, emphasize the importance of downtown uh to tourism and travel, uh particularly for those meetings and events um groups. You know, they want to come to meet in Manona Terrace, but enjoy the amenities that we have downtown. So we have put particular emphasis into supporting downtown's recovery and revitalization. Uh as you can see, we created a K P I measurement system that is points based that looks at the efforts that our organization has put in to help downtown recover. Uh we created a dedicated downtown website, which we didn't have before, um which I will show you here in a second. A dedicated collateral, you may have seen QR codes at kiosks downtown on little cards that are at restaurants, attractions, hotels, where people can scan that in their phone and jump to the website to learn out, to learn more about downtown and to enhance their visit. We've uh put effort in particular on those travel blogs, uh talking about downtown and all aspects of downtown. We were not just focusing on the um the Capitol or the museums. We're also telling the story of what happened uh last year and and the community story that came out of that. Um and you know, the community efforts to recover from from last year. Um we've also sponsored several downtown events and activities, including the Mad Lit series. We think that's very important to help draw uh folks downtown. Um there is the slide of the downtown Madison page. You can find it at visitmadison.com backslash downtown. You can click on any one of these uh little screens, and it will dive, take you in a deeper dive into some of the activities and um things that you can do and places you can see and visit downtown. Part of that downtown effort was to reach out to businesses that are located here. Um our partnership team did that. Uh pre-pandemic, our partnership model was a paid only model, um or paid primarily. Um some exchange, you know, we would promote you on our website. We would give you uh industry education opportunities. We've expanded that to pretty much everybody in the community because we know how difficult things have been in the last year. Uh we have more than two hundred downtown Madison businesses that are in our listings now. Uh the majority of these are not partners. The same thing from throughout the community, a number of um non-paying partners that we can now promote uh to visitors to um to visit and to check out and to spend money at. We're also diving deep into some partnerships and relationships. We really want to tell the community story and be community representatives. Um we are part, we've partnered in the last few months with Latino Chamber, the L G B T Q Chamber, and Black Chamber. Um we are in deep conversations, regular conversations with Mad Rep, Dane by Local United Way. Really just trying to work together to elevate not only tourism industry in Madison, but all of our community because because we know when we have a stronger community to talk about, we have a stronger community to share and stronger community for visitors to experience.
Recovery priority number five is um embracing and elevating diversity, equity, accessibility, and inclusion. This is really important to us. Our vision statement is that Madison is a place for all. Um so we are in the process of creating a roadmap for Destination Madison and for our partners as well. We want to look internally and externally. We've created a task force that's comprised of staff and board members um that's going to help us with sending out an R F P to engage a D E A I consultant in helping us with this roadmap and where we need to go. So we're excited about that. In addition, we are supporting the Music Cities Initiative, which is focused on D E A I strategies. Of course, Madlit, we are very excited about the Culture Center and the pop-up shops that opened downtown last weekend or the weekend before. And then number six, we're working on a new city contract. So we have a five-year contract with the city. Um because of the pandemic and everything going on, uh we were asked, let's take a look at that. And so that's moving along. We've been meeting with Connie Thompson and Bill Zeinman at the at Manona Terrace, who is representing the city in conversations. Ultimately, it will come to you all to take a look and ask questions and so forth. So that's moving right along. And then I'm going to turn it back to Rob. Um because we have been working very hard on workforce development, and he has done a tremendous job of creating this program for us.
Yes, workforce uh number one issue in hospitality and in a lot of industries. Uh hospitality in particular took the biggest hit of lost employees during the pandemic uh here in Madison and nationwide. And we understand the challenges with the industry. It um can be long hours. It can be very challenging customer interactions. So we wanted to put together a program that really highlights the benefits of being in hospitality and the potential career paths in hospitality. We want people to know that they can step into hospitality and have a long-term home. Uh we recently applied for a workforce development grant to help fund this uh vision. The vision is creating a hospitality workforce attraction development and retention pilot program. We would use our digital efforts, uh our social media channels to try to draw people into hospitality. Work with Madison College to train those people in some of the basics of customer service and of of the industry standards. And when we have people who are already in the industry, develop a leadership program with Madison College to help them uh stay stronger in the industry and find their ways into uh management and leadership roles. We will find out soon if we receive that funding. It should be a pretty quick launch for that program, and we anticipate um once it runs and we anticipate some success with it, being able to go back to Madison College and convert the program to a Spanish language program to connect with other audiences who could find their way into hospitality and benefit from the education experience with that. The benefit of this program with Madison College, by the way, is all participants will receive college credit toward an associate's degree so they can continue their education uh in hospitality or in something else if they choose, but they will have some college credit built up with that.
And so as we plan for twenty twenty two, here's some highlights. We're not completely done with our plan yet, but I did want to share a few things. We're going to continue to implement our recovery plan. That goes through March um of twenty twenty two or April of twenty twenty two. Uh we're working on a three-year strategic plan that's very flexible, just because of the unknown. We're going to implement a brand-new campaign, a brand campaign, um both on the B to B side and the B to C side of our business. We want to make sure we have exceptional customer service. All those groups that are coming in in twenty two, we want them to come in in a future year. So rebooking is going to be very important. Um trade show attendance to sell, increase the number of leisure travelers, increase digital followers, create our D E I roadmap and implement that, including media visits with that emphasis and um Music City support and implementation. Any questions? I know we ran through that pretty quickly, and I'm also happy to any point to meet with you if you just want to dive in deeper or if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh just one quick uh really high-level question. So in initial slide, you really mentioned about one point three or four billion twenty nineteen and some forty-plus million twenty twenty. Uh and I saw you in different slides, you mentioned about forecasting in hospitality, uh hotels and uh forecasting. I'm just really curious about forecasting overall number for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, uh in a bigger picture. And and also on a micro level, I'm curious to know where the restaurant industry stands in your forecasting. So that two questions.
Okay. I apologize. I didn't hear your first question because somebody got real loud out my window, and then I couldn't hear you. So I apologize.
So yeah, my first question was, your first slide had one point four billion dollar, you know, uh in twenty nineteen, you guys had, and then forty eight million some amount. I don't remember exact amount, but you did not mention about your forecast amount, how much it's going to be twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. So I'm curious, on a macro level, what that amount you guys have.
Got it, okay.
Different slide, you mentioned forecasting, but overall number, I'm curious. And second question, you already heard about restaurants.
Restaurants, yeah. Um great question on the forecasting for economic impact. We actually don't have that number yet. We're waiting on some research for that. What we do have is the forecasting for occupancy and average daily rate and revenue per available room. Why those numbers are important is because we want that average daily rate to increase because that's what they're paying that hotel motel tax on. So if, you know, if a hotel is usually charging one ninety-nine a night, but right now they're only charging eighty-nine because they're trying to rebuild their business, that's going to impact us as much as if somebody is not even in that room. So we're supporting those efforts and getting those rooms filled. But as soon as I get that forecasted number for what hopefully will be our economic impact, I'm so happy to share that with you. We um I know that restaurants were hit tremendously, especially in workforce. Workforce, the restaurants um were down forty four percent in workforce, continue to struggle. I do know that restaurants, I've got, we've got a couple of restaurants that are like, we've got to close one day a week. We just do not have the staff to open seven days a week, or we don't have the staff to open for breakfast, lunch, and dinner like we used to. Um so, you know, we're supporting as much as possible. I think what's really key to success here is getting those visitors back here because if they're in, they're eating. They're going to dine. We want them overnight. Day day trippers are great, but they're going to spend about four times more money in our community if they stay the night. That's extra meals um and so forth. And then I'm hoping that our office workers are going to come back soon because if you're working in the office during the week, you know, you're going to grab lunch out, or you might grab some dinner with somebody after work. But all of these things play into getting our restaurants back on their feet.
Appreciate that. We are at time, Aldo McKinney, we have one minute left. Do you want to quickly have a question?
No, I uh will will this presentation slides be made available?
Yes, this will be available, and Mattlin will share that with the with all the orders as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
And and uh Ellie, uh I really appreciate you guys coming here. Thank you very much for being here. And our office will share those slides and link of the meeting to all the orders. Uh our common council, as I mentioned before, uh personally, our common council agenda is really heavy, so it's very hard. But virtual meeting give us that flexibility to bring you at C C E C and share that information. And I saw thirteen orders attended this meeting. So we'll share that with all the orders and really appreciate you guys for being here and giving us presentation. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you to all of you. Also, when you get the presentation, Mattlin also has our email addresses. So if you have further questions, please don't be shy to reach out. We're so happy to answer any questions you have.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Move motion to adjourn by Alder Lemmer, Alda Carter. And thank you very much. It moved and seconded. See you guys soon. Bye.